Dayton City Commission Meeting will now come to an end. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. This morning, invocation will be given by Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord, thank you for your many blessings. Please give us the strength, wisdom, and humility to make good decisions for you and your people. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Blackshear, may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
So may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 19 meeting?
So move, Your Honor.
Second to motion, Your Honor.
Okay, then probably move in second to approve the minutes from the March 19 meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, so this morning, one of our favorite, favorite presentations, Mr. Steve Gando, information on plain neighborhoods development to present a monthly demolition update. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, city manager, clerk, thank you for having me back here today with our monthly update for the demolition program for the month of February 2025. So we had a really great month. I was mentioning last month when I was here that we had a really slow start to the year with the kind of the deep freeze we had in January. Well, we thought out quite a bit, we had 27 demolitions for the month, 21 of those were ARPA funded, three general funds, and three ODOD. And so that brings us up to 34 total demolitions in the first two months of the year. But that 27 number is a really strong number. It's really kind of the pace that we're trying to keep, you know, again, because we have a fairly large number the remaining two years, and so we want to keep at a steady, high pace there. So really good bounce back from January. On the pile status, at the end of January, we had 89. In February, we removed eight. We only added one, which was encouraging, so we're now at a status of 82. And that one pile, alone little pile there, the kind of the edge of Southern Dayton View neighborhood there, so encouraging. The work, though, those 27 piles were, again, in mostly ARPA-focused areas, but you can see that we are still continuing some work in the Miami Chapel Edgemont kind of area there. We are moving up north of Wolf Creek into Southern Dayton View and really progressing with that work. We had nine properties that were added to the structural nuisance list in the month of February, so we're at 17 for the year. And then the pipeline, so in the month of February, 71 properties we processed for title work. 119 went out for asbestos survey. And so, and then we currently had no for remediation, but obviously there's 119 that were in survey of those that had asbestos. We'll move down into that probably for the next month's stats, but that is a very strong pipeline of pending properties that'll be moving through here in the next few months. Our before and afters, so 42 Yale, many of you recall, this was just such a tragic loss of, you know, really beautiful property sustained two devastating fires. This was a great partnership with the Montgomery County Land Bank. We worked with them to totally clear the site. One of the last remaining pieces was the carriage house that was trying, we were trying to save with working with them, Preservation Dayton, but it had also had such catastrophic structural collapse that we had to remove that. But currently, the crews did a really great job of really grading out that site, teeing it up for potential redevelopment. 1532 West Grand, another one, really beautiful house, but had experienced a devastating fire. The interior was totally gone. So it's one of those things where the outside, the brick looks great, but the roof, the fire had just caused it to be a total loss. 1721-23 West Grand, another one where already an incident improvement for the neighbors there on either side, as well as 717, 719 Lexington, same thing there. And again, this is some of that work, as we were saying, moving up into that Southern Dayton View neighborhood. And then lastly, 738 Faulkner, 800 Faulkner, again, just two pretty blighted properties, and crews did a phenomenal job of clearing those out. And again, you know, we don't just remove the house, we remove brush, and we remove trees up to a certain diameter. So we're not, you know, we really sometimes with the brush could be just as bad. So in our contracts, we have it where up to a certain size, they will remove that, take all that out, and grade it down. So again, we're trying to prepare these sites either for acquisition by the neighbors, if they'd like it, or potential infill for a future opportunity. So on that, that's my note. But again, I'm really pleased with the work that they're doing. I feel like they have a pretty good stride going on. We're hoping to continue that going into the spring. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Yeah, just first question I have in terms of during the summer, the spring and summer, I'm assuming clearly that you have an opportunity to expedite some of the work that you've not been able to do during the course of the winter. How much is that going to help us go through this process?
So that's going to really help us. One of the things that these crews start at, you know, first light. And so obviously, we have longer days in the summer months, so it does give us more time to actually do more work. So with these first few months of the year, shorter daylight, they only can do so much, you know, waiting for the sun to come up and then the sunset, you know, especially for January, you know, around 5 o'clock. So we typically see our ability to do more because they're actually able to get more done over the course of the day in the summer months. So that feeds into it, and obviously, weather typically plays in. Only thing this spring to keep in mind is sometimes if it's a really rainy spring, we might push off that seeding and grading until it dries out because you got to, we want to get a good level of surface. So we are mindful, usually we'll try to communicate that to neighbors that we're not done, the crews are going to come back, but if it's just mud, they can't move that around evenly. So they will, and then we do not pay out until that is done. So we, it's a checks and balance there, but that's probably the only setback in the spring is that that seeding and grading part might have a little bit delay if it's a really rainy season.
All right. Commissioners, no, Commissioner Turner Sloss, questions?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Mr. Gando.
Thank you.
It's good to see you this morning. Thank you. As the mayor has already alluded, this is one of our favorite presentations of the month. So a couple of questions for you. The first is in regards to the additional one pile that was added to the, I believe we have like 82, 83, somewhere around there. Could you speak to what provisions are in place that you think may have contribute to that one pile? Again, that's a decent number because in the past, we've seen that number, you know, double, if you will. And I know Commissioner Fairchild had raised that point early on about some various provisions and working with the fire department, and I know Ms. Dixie and the entire department had discussions about the necessary provisions and putting some things in place. So could you speak to, are there anything that, is there, rather, anything that we're doing to perhaps suggest that may contribute to why that number is where it is now? And congratulations on that.
Yeah, well, yeah, hopefully it'll be a trend.
Yeah.
On this one, I will actually, I will get to the chief of staff and the city manager more of a backstory on this one. Seeing where it was, we've had a lot of problems down in that Ferguson-Negley area with just, you know, various different factors in there. And so I can work with our staff to try to maybe assemble a little bit of what specifically with this one, but also maybe that area of what and how we've been working with fire on some of our efforts to try to minimizing, you know, to get this number down to a low number. We know it, I don't say we know it's going to happen, but we're trying to work together to, so we'll pull something together and provide that to the chief of staff and city manager.
Okay, thank you. And then are you at liberty to discuss? I know this past Monday, there was a meeting in regards to Cornell Meek King, well-attended, myself, the mayor, Commissioner Fair, excuse me, Commissioner Shaw were in attendance, as well as yourself and the city manager, Ms. Jackson, and some community development, excuse me, community engagement staff members that were intended in attendance. Could you speak to, could you provide like an overview for those who were unable to make that meeting as to where we are in that process for the cleanup?
Yeah, sure. I mean, what we did Monday was working with the mayor and the commission office was bringing residents, giving residents an opportunity to have a conversation with us about the status of the Cornell Market, provided residents, and again, we want to thank them, 50-plus people turned out, which I really value that, its ability to get a lot of people on one message here and right from us. So we provided a timeline of basically when the fire started, actions taken by staff and ownership of that property over that course of time, leading to action or inaction. And currently, as I've shared with the group, that we have moved that to the criminal prosecution in the Dayton Municipal Court, which is where it is now. But we're, we've set up a communication channel with all of those that were in attendance. We've already communicated out to them yesterday, and our plan is to continue that communication, as well as those that weren't there, we will work through community engagement and the legislative base in terms of the neighborhood meeting. So, and we were already doing that, but we're going to kind of do that dual track, so it wasn't just, you had to be there to be on the list, but we'll continue that path of both the neighborhood associations and those that were in attendance as to where we are as this progresses through the criminal process and any other change that might come out of that, of the process.
Thank you. You've already stated, but if you wouldn't mind, I just want to footstump to make sure that you keep us abreast on the steps and the process itself. And you spoke to the acquisition process for neighbors, residents who may be interested in those various lots that are adjacent to their properties. Could you talk to that, please?
Yeah, so PND also supports the city's disposition, property disposition. So we have staff dedicated to working with residents on that process for acquiring it. And again, our, I think the policy is that we try to first work with the adjacent neighbors to give them that opportunity to acquire that, and then from there, if they've chosen not to, then we will go and consider it for future sale. And so in these situations, people on the website are to contact our office, and we'll connect them with the right staff for beginning that process for acquiring the property. And I don't have it off the top of my head what the fee is, but I believe that for the neighbor acquiring the property, the fee is considerably low versus other means.
Exactly.
I just want to clarify, so there's not miscon, so we don't create confusion, that those are for the lots the city actually owns.
Yeah.
Clearly, the 6,000 lots we maintain, and when a fire pile is removed, that does not mean we own it.
Yeah.
And that process, if people are interested and there are back taxes, they go through the county to get to acquire that property. But our staff would certainly refer them to that as well.
Absolutely.
But I just want to make sure we're keeping apples to apples.
Thank you, Ms. Dixie, for that clarification. I do, if I could work with you, I have a property or a neighbor who's interested in a vacant lot that's next to their property that is city-owned, so I'll work with you if that's okay. And then last, I just want to bring this to your attention, 300 Fernwood, as a fire pile, if you could provide us with an update, that was a contract that we approved, it were, actually, it was a property that, on a contract that we approved back in December, I believe it was November, December. Matter of fact, it was December the 11th.
That's good memory.
2024, yes, as well as Drummer Avenue and McLean Street.
Drummer and Blain?
McLean Street. Drummer Avenue and McLean, right on the corner.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I will provide those to the chief of staff.
Thank you, and please give our best to the staff and congratulate you, congratulations to you all on the great work that you are doing.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you.
You good?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, no, good report. Thank you for the information and the work your team's doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, likewise, but I just, I do want to say, you know, that was an outstanding presentation that you did about the Cornell Market the other day. Difficult conversation to have with community members like us, they want these piles to move right away, but there are some restrictions there, constraints, and you did a very good job. You and the city manager did a very good job explaining that, so I appreciate you for that.
Thank you. Hey, Commissioner Joseph.
I just want to thank you for your efforts. I don't remember a February where we had 27 demolitions in all these years. This is excellent work. Guess we can thank good weather and not too much mud, but excellent job you and your staff.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Colleagues have said it all. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So calendar items, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any additions or comments relative to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Dixie, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this morning's calendar. It's fairly perfunctory and brief. I do want to do one highlight, which is our informal resolution number 1014-25, which is the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council, just highlighting again some of the great investment that's happening across the city. The Turk, the Tax Incentive Review Council, reviews all of our tax incentives. So we have TIFs, Taxing from Financing, we have enterprise zone, and we have community investment area programs. And just for you to have a flavor of our tax increment, we have five TIFs that were created in support of $154 million in investment, and that doesn't include our remote TIF. It is responsible, those TIFs are responsible for the retention and creation of 1,260 jobs, and all TIF projects are in good standing, and it has been recommended that the six TIFs be continued until the 2025 review. Enterprise Zone Program, we have six enterprise zone agreements that were reviewed on and evaluated based on their pledged versus actual investment, their job creation and retention, and the hiring of city residents. The city experienced through the EZ program an additional $160 million in total investment from businesses pledging to invest just $31 million, so it shows how much they, you know, they pledge, but then the actuality is usually many times more, and created 118 jobs. The average investment by a business in the EZ program is about $26.7 million and exceeding the average pledge of about $5.2 million. Employment in those enterprise zone businesses, total employment is 1,386 full-time equivalent positions. And the number of jobs attributed as a result of the EZ enterprise where they pledged to create 118 was actually 319. So they grew more jobs and they invested more than they thought they would in the beginning. And then finally, the Community Reinvestment Area Program really is a, this is a program that recognizes investment and abates the growth of the taxes for 10 to 15 years. And so it's really not, it is a, what we consider a non-cash tool, so it doesn't require any general fund, and it's just a tool in our toolbox, but it's very helpful in attracting investment particularly into our neighborhoods. It's used in both commercial and residential. But just to give you an overview of that, the CRA program assisted 174 residential projects that leveraged over $238 million of investment. That's neighborhood investment in our residential projects. 29 commercial industrial projects leveraged over $790 million in investments. And they are responsible for retaining and creating 4,119 full-time jobs and 104 part-time jobs. That is all in a year, by the way. That's not multiple years. That is for 2024. So I think that one of the things that we track, the health of our city, is through all the investment that's happening, right? There is a lot of investment happening, and these tools, which you all just helped expand in West Dayton, are really critical in that attracting investment and helping to stabilize our residential base and growing jobs. So just wanted to give you that highlight. You had the reports in your packet to review, as long with the summary, but really proud of the work that our development staff have done, because each one of those requires an application, conversations and application, and monitoring. And so really great work. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Tremendous. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
There are none, Your Honor.
None? Okay, commissioners, comments, questions on calendar items? Commissioner Turner Sloss.
I don't have any on calendar items, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, two. On this contract with Dell, it says 150 Dell computers. Is that 150 computers per year? I think it's a five-year contract. The way it reads here is that it's 150 total, and that seems to be an exorbitant price.
One minute, let me see here. It is for 150 Dell laptops over the five-year contract.
So we're going to spend $1 million on 150 computers? I called about this yesterday.
Oh, I didn't get any note. Let me, let me call, let me call John, thank you, because I, it's not.
Yes, that isn't very clear. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Yeah, so basically, what we're doing through this procurement is we are centralizing all the procurement and distribution of workstations. And so this is over a five-year period, and so every department, instead of going off and doing their own thing, we're going to centralize that, and so it provides a lot of value. We can control our inventory, we can get bulk discounts on procurement, and so that should be about 150 computers over each year for the next five years.
Okay, so 700?
Approximately.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's hard to hit that exactly, thread that needle to the workstations, but it's going to be right there about.
Around 750, give or take, is a lot better than 150 for a million dollars.
Computers. And so, no, 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 we're much smarter with our procurements.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
No, I just wanted that clarification.
So you thought the value had gone up?
Those would be some quite powerful computers.
Supercomputers.
Yeah. My second question is around the, I think it's the CRA component. I remember there were some concerns raised by Dayton Public Schools Board of Education around the contract, or the CRA with the Arcade. Was that looked at, and are we, are they in compliance, the Arcade and Dayton Public Schools?
I know that it was looked at. I know that we worked with the school board to help understand, because they were counting from day one, and it was after project completion, so they were a few years ahead of their calculation. I, you know, it's really the treasurer of DPS to make sure that they are monitoring those agreements, because we are not a party to those agreements. They are, the compensation agreement is between, you know, the developer or entity and the school board. And so we are, we provide information as they request, but I can't tell you if they're all compliant at this point or not. I know that we certainly stress that with our developers, and we stressed it particularly because of, you know, the Phase Two that they, you know, were under construction for, before they went into under construction, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, so I represent this body on the Turk Council, and, you know, all of the projects, like the city manager mentioned, are in compliance, and Dayton Public Schools is also at the table, so they're fully informed about this. And what's extraordinary about, well, the great thing about these different tax incentives and tools that we're using are leveraging, have always leveraged a significant return on the investment. So I mean, these are just fantastic tools. Oftentimes, there's a lot of misinformation out there regarding the school system and how it's going to affect them, you know. If projects don't move forward, you can't get anything for those, there will be no return at all. But this is just a great opportunity. I think we just need to talk about this more, because these are excellent tools, and I hope that even more folks will take advantage of these great opportunities and what it brings back to this community, it just speaks for itself. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep. Hey. You good? Yeah, on that same note, you know, Commissioner Shaw, the aspect of the law was changed, actually, a long time ago, 1988, Okinawa State Legislature, that gave the school system the opportunity to be involved in the process with TIFs and CRAs. Prior to that time, there was no opportunity for them to have any input whatsoever. And even if a company decided they wanted to have a ten-year TIF, if they left five or six years into that, the schools got absolutely nothing in terms of process because they had no negotiation power whatsoever. The law that was passed in 1988 gave them an opportunity to talk and be engaged in the process. If it was 75%, yeah, 75% of that total cost, then they had the opportunity to be engaged in the conversation and to talk with those developers and business owners to work out some in-kind processes to give the schools an opportunity to make up some of the dollars that they would lose. So again, it's a long time, long time law. I'm sort of surprised it continues to be confusion relative to that process, but maybe we had to do another session, because I know we did a session a couple of years ago with the school board and superintendent to help them see that if we did not have the businesses moving in, that there was absolutely zero that they were going to get from that space. And by having them there, even though there was a delayed return, if you will, on the dollar, that they were still going to get something in terms of that process, as well as in-kind benefits as well. Okay? So at this point in time, let me have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations.
I move that we adopt the city manager's recommendations.
Second. Okay, so we probably move in second to have a motion to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, thank you. Legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
Second reading resolution number 6854-25, authorizing continuation of a $4.50 passenger facility charge at the James M. Cox Dayton International Airport. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Informal resolution number 1014-25, accepting the recommendation of the Tax Incentive Review Council for report year 2024.
I move that we adopt informal resolution 101425.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we probably move in second to adopt resolution, formal resolution 1014-25. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Would you like a roll call vote on the informal?
If you'd like, please.
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
That is all you have, Your Honor.
Okay. So Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
There are none.
There are none? Okay, yeah. Dixie, do you have any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
No? Ms. Blackshear, do you have any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, closing comments? Commissioner Turner Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I would like to congratulate, and please forgive me, I failed to mention this some weeks ago, but I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate Mr. Tom Ritchie Jr. on his appointment as the new director of Public Works. So congratulations, sir. And again, please charge it to my, to my mind and not my heart. I also like to have a couple of comments in recognition of Sunday, March 30th marks the end of the holy month of Ramadan, and so I'm wishing all of my Muslim brothers and sisters in Daytonians celebrating the end of Ramadan blessed. And please forgive me if I mispronounce, iddya, filled with joy and prosperity for you and your families. And then, Ms. Reed, thank you very much for providing the various events that we have going on in celebration of Women's History Month. Join Karen D. Brain for special collections as she highlights the achievements of Black women, pioneers like Octavia Butler, Stella Jean, and Anna Lewis across various fields, and that will be Thursday, March 27, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Northwest Branch Library. Registration is required, you can sign up on the library's website. And then we also have Louise Choi, born in 1860, was a pioneer educator and community leader in Dayton. She became the only Black teacher retained after integrating Dayton schools in 1887, teaching at Garfield School until her retirement in 1920. Ms. Choi also helped found the YWCA, excuse me, in Dayton and was a founding member and the first treasurer of the local NAACP branch. Her legacy continues through Louise Choi Elementary School, honoring her contributions to education and civil rights. Thank you, Ms. Reed, for providing this information. And I believe that's all I have, Your Honor.
That's it? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, first, I want to congratulate our staff, particularly Public Works. There's a story on WYSO about some trees that had been identified to come down and come down. a story on WYSO about some trees that had been identified to come down, and neighbors expressed concern. And our staff worked with the neighbors to minimize the number of trees that had to come down. So thank you for two things. One, working so collaboratively with our neighbors is a great example of, of that work and being responsive to our neighbors. And second, protecting our tree canopy and how important that is, particularly in, in that neighborhood. So kudos to the staff for that. So thank you. And then, before we convene again, April 1st will pass, which is the day that Dayton was founded. So 229 years ago, the first settlers landed on the, from, coming up from Cincinnati, the first white settlers from Cincinnati landed on the banks of the Great Miami River, down there at, close to where Maine and Monument are. So wish everyone a, whatever that is, Founder's Day is happy day.
Okay.
Birthday Day, whatever it is, but that birthday.
Yeah, we had to come up with an official name for that, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. And, and one last thing, the Reverends Henderson and Hunt have invited me to preach at Corinthian Baptist Church this coming Sunday. That's at 10 a.m., and I'll be preaching on the kin of Goliath.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, I'm excited to host the day at DAYY this Friday, March 28th, in collaboration with the Dayton Boys and Girls Club, our rec centers in the Dayton Airport, and also local universities and AIRCAMP, where we're giving Dayton youth a hands-on experience in the aviation industry. It's very exciting. We've been doing this now for about four years. We've now expanded it to a full day. So this is just a great opportunity for our young people to learn about careers in aviation. And I really encourage folks to, to get involved with this as we continue this over the next, next several years. I'm also looking forward to attending the National, National League Cities, the Neighborhood Leadership Institute kickoff this Thursday at 5:30 p.m. at Sinclair College Building 12 to celebrate the start of the program. And we're going to be recognizing community members who are participating in the program and also those who help run the event. And this is just a great opportunity to learn about how the city functions, the different levers, both in, in our organization, but also throughout the city. It's just a great opportunity for folks that want to engage in the community to, to do so. So looking forward to that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. Just once, this is the last commission meeting for Women's History Month. I want to highlight a famous Daytonian, Elektra C. Doran. She was a trailblazer in library science, a key figure in our history. As chief librarian from 1896 to 1905, she revolutionized Dayton Public Library, introducing branch libraries, a traveling book wagon, and public access library shelves. Before that, you'd go to the desk, the librarian would bring you books. E.C. Doran also founded the American Library Association and was deeply involved in women's suffrage. The Elektra C. Doran Branch in Old North opened in 1928, was named in her honor, and her legacy continues through the library's current extensive women's suffrage collection. So I want to thank you and remember E.C. Doran.
Okay, thank you. So while we're talking about ladies involved in the, I guess, Women's Month, Alice Downing-Lucas was a civil rights activist and a community leader here in the city of Dayton. And also, she was known for her advocacy for African-American youth, as well as women, being involved in the United Golfers, Golfers Association, and integrated African-Americans into the area of PGA. Also, she was also known as the first Black woman who was involved with WDAO Radio, which is, of course, still 1210 West Third Street here in the city of Dayton, Ohio. And YWCA Lifetime Achievement Award for all of her contributions. Additionally, this weekend is going to be really busy for, for Dayton residents. We have got Commissioner Shaw doing some things. We also got Commissioner Fairchild who's doing some preaching. We also have the Kettering Foundation that's going to be involved in showing the story of Epcun C. Moses, both on Saturday and Sunday at 12:30 at the Neon Theater. And that will be, of course, free for those who choose to come in and partake of that. Additionally, they were talking about the aspect that Epcun C. Moses, again, demonstrating his skills and his background in terms of how he began to be so famous in terms of the, the hurdles that he ran, winning multiple, multiple Olympic trials, as well as other competitions. Also, Jack and Jill of America will have their podium this weekend. Also, the Deltas Ladies will have their program, Saturday. Both these programs will be on Saturday, where they're representing and presenting young ladies and young men to society and the community as far as Dayton, Ohio is concerned. And then, I think, as we look to the Dayton Public Schools, will have a program, which is a statewide program, My Brothers Keepers Program, that was initiated by former, former President Obama, that talked about how we can bring more and more of our young people into a positive space. So they will have a program this Saturday morning from 8 until 2. It will be at Sinclair, again, presenting awards to Dayton Public Schools and City of Dayton for being the first to have a My Brothers Keepers program here in the state of Ohio, I think, 10 years, as well as a special prize to a young man who was a graduate of Dayton Public Schools, who's now at Sinclair. So I will not give all the details associated with that, but someone's going to be very surprised. So with no further business to come before this commission, love and peace for all and hatred for none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.